All right, for the delay, I'd like a motion to come out of executive session, please.
Motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion to seal the minutes, please.
Motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, and any discussion at all on that? Nope, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, and at this time, I'd ask the clerk for roll call, please.
Carrie McGee is not present. Greg LaBlossinia?
Here.
Deb Bacon?
Here.
Gary Cody?
Here.
Ian Dixon?
Here.
Nicholas Gorham?
Here.
Ed Wazika?
Here.
Okay, and I'd like to ask the town sergeant to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and if you'd like to remain standing for the invocation, we have, we don't have a pastor with us or Reverend with us tonight, so I'll take the invocation laud. Please look over this proceedings and guide us in the best decision-making we can and that we act in respect for each other to, and we thank you for the ability to serve you and your people, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Emergency evacuation plan, Mr. Town Sergeant. Okay, well, the next thing is President's comments. I'm not going to give President's comments, and Mr. McGee is in Houston, is that where he is tonight? So, we'll ride by the President's comments tonight. Next on the agenda is the approval of the town council minutes for March 4th, 5th, and the 11th. Okay, and I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Mr. President, I'm unable to participate on the vote for March 11th because I wasn't here, so could we please take each one separately?
Absolutely, okay, so I'll accept the motion for March 4th.
Motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, any discussion or changes to be made on any of them? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? All right, all in favor. Motion for March 5th?
Motion.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Okay, no changes or anything? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor. Okay, the, Ann is not going to vote on 311, so a motion to accept the minutes for 311.
Motion.
You go to second, okay, it's okay. Any discussion or, any discussion of changes? Okay.
Do you take the vote now?
Yeah, did you say, Deb, you've got some changes or something to make? Okay.
That might be the one that's not working.
The one not working?
It's working before I throw this one away.
No? Yes, here it is.
Scrap money.
On page 31 of 41, it is, let's see, it's partially through here, it will say, "President McGee replied that with his role as council president, he can discuss things individually with members." The, "I did add at that point that he did not reach out to me, and he also made the comment, 'We learned how to count to three.'" So I'd like those additions. On page 33 of 41, it says, "Council member Bacon addressed the Moody's report dated 10/4/18 when the council received it, which talked about credit challenges from ongoing general fund support of sewer operations. I did not say resulting in a decline of available reserves in large unfunded pension liabilities." In fact, I did, I did state, "Rating outlook. The negative outlook reflects the town's general government financial support of its sewer operations that has resulted in a decline of available funds." I read it right from the Moody's report. And on page 35 of 41, under the annual report presentation by the planning commission, it states, "He noted that he is here tonight to hear the presentation himself and was told by Ms. Wells that she would be presenting it herself to council." It, he actually, Russ Crossman actually stated, "We are here tonight and to hear the presentation." We, not himself. Because there were five members of the planning commission there that night. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, did you get those changes, Madam Clerk? Okay, all right, so it'll be with those changes, the motion has been made and seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed, 3-0.
And one abstention.
And one abstention, right. All right. Okay, now, next on the agenda is the school department report. Okay, welcome, sir.
Thank you for having me. I've got three things on the school department report for you tonight. First is Scarlett Lewis, the mother of Newtown shooting victim Jesse Lewis and founder of the Jesse Lewis Choose Love Initiative, gave her presentation to the middle school faculty on Wednesday, February 27th. "Our high school and middle school have both committed to implementing the Choose Love enrichment program, which is a no-cost pre-K through 12th grade program that teaches educators and their students how to choose love in any circumstance and helps them become connected, resilient, and empowered individuals. These skills, tools, and attitudes have been proven through decades of scientific research to be the best way to ensure a healthy, meaningful, and purpose-filled life." Second item here, congratulations to Coventry Regional Career and Technical Education Teacher Gail Farrell for being chosen as a Career and Technical Education Educator of the Year. Ms. Farrell is a teacher in Coventry's Health Careers Program. She joins a long line of Coventry Public Schools educators who are recognized as the best of the best by their colleagues at the state and national levels. And finally here, Coventry Public Schools has received a five stars, five-star bright stars rating for our preschool programs. This is the highest rating awarded to preschool programs in Rhode Island. Only four public schools in Rhode Island have the five-star rating, Cherahoe, East Providence, Westerly, and now Coventry. Also, less than 2% of all preschools, so this means private preschools as well, in Rhode Island have the five-star rating. This is a major accomplishment for our community and is directly aligned with our strategic plan. Thank you to Mrs. Denise Ahern, Washington Oak Principal, Mrs. Christine Mendezzi, Director of Facilities, Mr. Jason Martin, and our entire preschool staff for their commitment to excellence. And that is all I have.
Thank you for your report. Any questions, Mr. Pearson? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, the finance director update. Welcome, Mr. Onette.
Good evening, Council. Again, I'm going to try to do this quickly, I've been told that I ramble along quite often, so I'll just try to move along quickly, so if you wouldn't mind just holding some of the questions to the end, and then I'll try to address them as best I can. So the same thing that we're going to do, just like always, same agenda. Revenues, when we're looking at the collection rates from where we are from last year to this year, we're pretty close. The grand total for percentage is a little low here. I did a little digging on this one and found that the ways they were booking some state revenues is, hasn't hit here yet. You'll see this hit at the end of March, so that will actually add up really close to it. So we're really right on track with it, if you'd like to see them, that's fine, it just hasn't hit the the report that I pulled from. I've talked to the Deputy Treasurer today about this, I know exactly where the, where the breakdown in communication was from past years, the way it happened versus how it should be happening when it comes to the internal reports. Everything is not changed, it's just the way that the internal reporting mechanism is. So we're right on track as well with that. Again, same thing, we're looking at around the 66 percentile coming in when it comes to the expenditures. As requested, I broke it down, or you can't see this yet, but you will see that I broke it down by subtotal for the departments as requested. So when we go through this, you can see their general budgets as well. You'll see that, again, in fiscal year 19, we're pretty much right along the line. The Board of Canvassers, I did a little digging on this one again last year. You can see that this year, we're up high. Again, this budget is really low. What happened on this one was, from last year's budget, they didn't, there wasn't budget in the FICA and the MED for all of the overtime hours for temporary employees. So we're overspending according to that line item because it was, that wasn't attributed to those hours. So we're paying the people as we're supposed to be paying them, and FICA, MED, everything's being taken out, but in the budget, it wasn't there. So it's only a couple hundred dollars comparative, but at the same time, that's why that is a little bit higher.
Did the special election have anything to do with that as well, too?
There was a little, there is a little bit involved with the special election and the cost that increased there, too. So the overall budget is up higher, so I would only see this go up. I'm going to guess, this is, I can't, I'm actually not going to guess at this point as what it's going to be. We can track it along at the end of, at the end of March, at the end of this quarter, but that's where it came in, and there's not much you can do about that right now, so.
Okay.
Going on, again, right along what you would expect, the only one that's really, really close is the municipal court for the 66%, everything else is tracking just below. No significant things to note here for any of the, again, here, a little bit higher on the police civilians, but again, when we look at the total budget for the police department, you can see that it's pretty much tracking right along with that 66 percentile for the total budget. DPW, last year, you can see they spent everything at this point, and this goes through February. So, well, it'll be interesting to see where they come to the end of March, considering we did have some snowstorms and that there will be extra expenses incurred in March. But again, when we look at the total budget across all of their sub-departments, you can see that it's still below that 66%, it's just over that 60% mark. The other one's planning zoning board, the total for the, the total budget for planning and zoning is below 60% mark, so they're doing pretty well over here, and across the board, they're, they're, they're well in line. General Public Service, again, doing well. Spentitures are pretty much right in line with what they were last year. So general update, the bond just went out, did the signing, we came in at 2.859, much, much better than we thought we were anticipating. That's partly because it's, you can't time the market, and that, and that, we just got lucky when it comes to the timing of the market. The bond yield curve has been considered to be, quote, "flat as a pancake" for a while. I was talking to some bankers when I came to this, and that was actually their term, "flat as a pancake." So because everything, the, the yield curve dropped dramatically, we had eight bids that came in for this. This was the lowest bid that This was the lowest bid that we got and we took, and significant savings. Now, this approximate fifty thousand dollars in savings, that's just in this year. But I didn't want to give the actual figure until I see the full schedule, and I'm going to have Steve Maseroni, who is our advisor, provide us, provide me an exact number. I want, before I give you an exact figure, I just want to let you know that there's significant savings over the lifetime of this loan from this dramatic drop. Now, what we're going to have, because we did roll some of the bond, we did take a little bit of bond premium to roll the costs into it, it was a flat three percent. So in, you will see the full schedules of this very shortly, when everything's all wrapped up and all done. But we did, we did, we did very well. Everyone was very happy with the outcome of this bond sale.
Even with the negative outlook put on our bond rating, because the market has been so flat, we did this well.
There's a bunch of other reasons, yes, but that is one, that is the primary driver. There was also, we took a little bit of insurance with this as well, so there's a little bit of upfront cost when you take insurance on a bond. But when you take insurance on a bond, it also helps with the interest rate. So you tend, depending upon if you take the money or not take, take the insurance or not take the insurance, it could have a long-term benefit, which is what we have here. So it drove down the cost. There's other pieces in that when it came to the plan for addressing the sewer issue, that, that management does have a plan in that we're going forward towards this. And yes, the negative outlook would have a effect. It didn't seem the market had a significant effect. It, it did have an effect, I'm sure, but it's, luckily, we did well. The other bond, just to make mention of this, the other interest rates that came in, the other bids were, were higher than this. They were up over three percent, just slightly. So there was, they were. So just depend, just the one bid that came in, they just did really well on this one. So we just, we just did well. It's the market, it's the great thing about the market.
As John said, it's going to be a substantial saving over the life of this bond. Fortunately, we were, we were hoping at three-point-five, and our wildest dream was three-two-five, and when these numbers started coming in on, it was amazing, we couldn't believe it. We're sitting there and just shocked at what we got, we're able to get them in at. So we're, this is going to help us out in, reduce the cost, long-term on this.
I would also make that, three-two-five would be highly. At that time, I wasn't expecting three-two-five, I was expecting at best three-five, three-three-five, three-four. That's kind of where I was hoping to end up. We did, we, and everyone was very happy with this outcome, very happy.
Yeah, well, listen, I'm, I'm really happy with it, because I thought the negative outlook was going to really bite us in the butt when we came to do this. I, I really did, and, and, and it didn't.
It, it has, it has to do with a lot of other factors.
I'm not often speechless, but I kind of am.
Well, it has other factors to take into account. There's also the council has changed over. There's a leadership change over that has taken into effect here. So, and anybody that's looking at a, if I'm an investor, I'm looking in, and I see there's a negative outlook that's put on, I'm looking to see what the town's doing. And the town is making the changes that are needed to get, to correct these issues. We're taking it on head-on, as evident with you and I talking. We're, we're doing this. So, and you can ask Ed, I'm constantly bothering him about sewer and how I'm going to, how we're fixing it, and I, I, I think that the market took that into account, personally.
Well, I don't, I don't want to bum out the rest of your night, but as long as I'm sitting here, we're not going to have any choice but to take it on head-on.
That's not a bum, that's, hey, I'm, I'm ready for it, and I'm, I've asked Ed, I'm ready to go. Ready to go.
That's, that's where we're working towards, we're working on a long-term plan. Once this report from the Auditor General is out and moving forward with that, we've got some ideas and some planning that we're working on right now on moving this thing forward. And you'll note that we actually have a proposed budget for this, for the FY twenty, proposed budget, that actually has us in the black.
Correct.
On the sewer fund this year because of, there's some of the things we did last year on, on the refi on, on one of the bonds, and moving some of that money down. So we're, we're looking at projecting into the black on that.
And that's still with the current sewer rates being insufficient. When, I am very, I am looking forward to the OIG's report, so that way, we really can start hit the ground running. And that's why I'm, we've been doing a lot of things behind the scenes, getting ready to go, so that way, when the report hits, we can literally start running and correcting a lot of these things.
One of the keys with this is the revenue has to be one-point-two.
Revenue has to be one-point-two-five on, on the bond, on the debt cost. And we do not have that, we are working towards it. And even though we won't be there this year, with everything that we're looking forward to and making the changes over the next several months on the whole plant, we will be at that point by next fiscal year. So we, this is, I think we've come a long way on where we were, a year and a half ago.
No, 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 I think so, too. And I think we, I think we're, I don't want to say we've turned the corner, but we're starting to make that turn.
We're seeing, we're seeing the curve in the road is what we're doing.
Right, right. I just, you know, I, I want to get to a point where this sewer project is not a self-created blight on this community, because that's what it sits as right now.
I'm fully aware of that.
You know, and I, I just want to get to the point where it's self-funding and, and it's not a blight on this community that, that, listen.
You want to say, hey, we can have a conversation?
Previous councils, and, and I don't mean the two or three previous councils, I mean way back, have created this monster. It's just.
I heard it started back in nineteen eighty-one, this whole thing. So it, it, there's, there's decades of, of history to be aware of when making these decisions. And that's why I say, I say we're taking this on head-on. And if you want to sit down and have a conversation, I would be more than happy to have a conversation.
I know you will. I know you will.
I can't shut them up some days.
Here I am, still blabbering on.
That's, that's okay. That's okay.
So the OIG report, we just had a very quick conversa, oh, sorry.
You've got something, Deb?
I, I do, thank you.
Sorry.
I just wanted to ask, you mentioned you took insurance. Did we take insurance on the, the other bond for the?
Uh, which other bond? Depends on which bond. There's some bonds that we had done before.
Part one for the, the police, the police human service?
I, I don't believe they did. Again, I wasn't involved in that one, that was by the former town manager and former Finance Director. I don't know what they did on that, on how they did it. We can go back and look at it, see if it is, but I, something tells me it's, they didn't.
Okay. And what was the purpose for taking out the insurance?
It's very similar to, let's see here.
It's almost like PMI, and it kind of guarantees.
Right, for, for a home loan. This is a, a comparison.
It's very similar to that, and it, it helped to ensure that they knew they were going to get their money.
It lowers the risk.
And it lowers the risk, exactly. So the smaller upfront, the small upfront cost actually helped us to reduce down the overall cost of, of the bond.
The cost upfront is actually less than if we had not taken out the insurance. So you take out a little bit of insurance upfront.
And how much was, when you say a little bit of insurance?
What was it, twenty-five thousand?
I, I think it was below twenty-five.
It was something, but it was, it was not, when you're looking at a seven, seven million fifty thousand dollar loan.
And that's, that was rolled into the?
And then again, you, you see the number coming in well below, significantly below three percent when you're looking in basis points in bond terms. This is really well, we, it was a smart move to do that.
Okay. And you also mentioned that one of the other factors was a management, you have a, management has a plan. Did you have to submit a plan?
No.
Regarding the sewer fund?
Not regarding the sewer fund, no, but it.
What, what's the management plan? Because it's the first I'm hearing of it.
It's, it's, you can see that management, when you're, okay, let me explain this as far as, if I'm coming into the market and I'm going to buy Coventry's bond. I see Coventry making those decisions. Coventry's making those leadership changes, you can see the councils come in. You can see that there's a new Finance Director. There's no, the, the town manager has been rolled over. There's been, there's, they've been addressing the issue. Inside of the bond document itself, there is a, one paragraph, I guess maybe like two, three sentence, maybe three sentences long, which addresses sewer because of the fact that it is, it, Moody's addresses it directly, so we had to address it directly. And in that, it states things like, management will look at a new rate study was one of them. Things of that nature. So you'll find that on page very, very early on in that, so I, I'll direct it to you when, when you're there. It's literally just a paragraph, just stating, literally, we're going to be doing a rate study, management's done turnover. So it's, when you read it and someone else is coming in the market to buy, you know that we've addressed, that Coventry is addressing it.
Would you be able to send that paragraph? Would you be able to scan that and send it to all council members?
I should be able to find that really easily.
Oh, that'll be great.
It's pretty quick. I mean, these are really deep documents, but I know exactly where to find it. I know exactly where to get it, yeah.
All right, that would be terrific. Thank you.
It's, it's a paragraph.
Okay, no, that, I'd like to know, you know, what it is, you know. Thank you.
You're welcome. And while we're talking about the, the OIG report, briefly again, I, we just had a quick conversation with Dennis and Rena from the OIG, and we're going to have a conference call this week regarding it. And we've looked, I've looked at it again, I don't have any personal requirement, request for it to be changed. I don't see anything significantly out of line when it comes to, I don't, I don't see anything that would warrant any wording, that's rephrasing, I should say. So I think we'll, this will be coming out very, very, very shortly. So we'll have a conference call, I think it's Tuesday or Wednesday. So we'll have that conference call on Wednesday.
Excellent.
And one other thing that happened, I put, submitted this before. We had a conversation also with OIG regarding our financial statements, specifically page thirty-five of the financial statements. I brought along the, or I had our auditor speak directly to the Attorney General as well. So Dennis and Rena, myself, Ed, and then also Paul Dancero, we're on a conference call. Paul Dancero had to explain exactly what happened to the OIG while we were there listening, because I was not going to play middleman, I was just going to, you explain what happened. Essentially, what happened on the bottom of page thirty-five is that there was a hidden cell in the statement of net position. So that dollar figure on the total cash and investments, that sixty-seven thou, sixty-seven million dollars, is this still the same number? That part right there was essentially a printing error on them, they fell through the cracks, I guess, but that was, that number is the same number that flows through. So on the financial statements, if you flip over to page twenty-two as well, it's in there, as well as in the front, basic financial statements, you'll find it on page fourteen as well, that, that missing, quote-unquote, missing, four million, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars, it's also in page fourteen. So the information was a printing error on the bottom, again, when it came to that hidden cell. It looked as if that Excel statement had a hidden cell, so it didn't print out when they went to the printers.
There was actually two missing rows.
Yeah.
That were hidden.
So.
In the explanation.
In, in the interest of full disclosure, this wasn't found by anybody on the council.
This was found by Mr. LeBlanc, who.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, I wish you'd called me instead of posting it, but, and I agree, I appreciate it. And the funny thing is, though, when we went back and looked.
Right, but, but, just so everybody knows, Mr. LeBlanc is just a resident in the town of Coventry, a taxpayer in the town of Coventry, and he found it. Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to recognize that, because although we don't get paid much, believe me, we have professionals, and how, and I'm not blaming you, so please don't take it that way.
That's fine, I'm on.
How none of us in this building picked up on it, I don't know. I'm glad somebody did. I'm glad it was brought to our attention. Like you, I, I would have rather had it brought to our attention maybe in a different fashion, but I have no problem with the way you did it either. I would have liked the town manager to be notified rather than him picking it up on Facebook. So please, Jamie, in the future, if there's a problem that you find and you want to post it, that is your right, but please notify someone here so we can address it before we pick it up on Facebook, because we may not. I know I certainly never would have, because I know that much about Facebook. So I know I would have never picked it up. Thank you. And I mean that from gentleman to gentleman, thank you. And that's why I wanted to recognize, I saw you were here tonight, I wanted people to understand, you were the one that found this. So the credit of finding it goes to you, the credit of getting it fixed goes to you in dealing with Dancero. I mean, we've dealt with that company for a long, long time, and, and I'm not saying it wasn't an honest mistake, I would never question the man, but.
Well, the thing is, I mean, it's, those, those, those pages are typically, they, they plug in the numbers every year and they go through. We went back and actually looked at the previous year's audit.
Looks like the same format, exactly.
And the same mistake as in the previous year's audit, where those lines were hidden, they didn't. The totals are all there, the totals were all correct. Jamie, I, I give you a lot of credit for sitting there and going through two-hundred-plus pages of math.
Well, my, my, my contention here, though, Ed, is that we pay a lot of money for that report. We should be getting an accurate.
We had a discussion with them over it.
An accurate report. So moving forward, please.
We had a discussion already, and we will, yep.
There's a reason why he was directly on the phone with OIG, answering directly to them as well.
I mean, if they were doing it for us as a favor and they made a mistake, oh, well.
I wish I had time to audit an auditor, because, I mean, like, this, I, we shouldn't be paying money for a mistake of that, that, like that. We shouldn't be seeing that, we shouldn't. We should be, that, these should be done, completed, I shouldn't be questioning things when it comes to that. I'm very happy that it was something that it was like that, but.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not a financial whiz like you are with numbers, I'm not. I'm not a financial anything. My wife handles my checkbook at home, and, and not me, because we'd be living in a box under a bridge somewhere if it was up to me, so. But it's embarrassing as a council member for a taxpayer to have to find a mistake in a document that we paid to have printed, that we paid to have prepared for us and presented publicly. It's embarrassing as a council, and I'm not speaking for any of the other council people up here, but I know.
I'll speak directly for myself, too.
As a council member, I was embarrassed.
As for myself, too.
I was embarrassed. And, and, and moving forward, I just want to make sure it doesn't happen again.
It will not happen again.
It won't. I agree with that.
I take you as a man, you're a man of your word, so I'll, I'll take you that.
So.
Go ahead, Deb.
I just have one question. Greg, do you mind if I ask Mr. LeBlanc a question?
No, go right ahead.
Since you did review our audit and you did find this mistake, I must ask, was there anything else you found that we should be aware of?
I have a little question.
Do you want to come to the mic, please?
Appropriate to do it now, or should we wait for public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Until we, until we open it up to the public? Or is it appropriate to do it now and then?
I can sit down, that's fine.
No, 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 I just want, I'm just asking for a legal.
I think, I think, Mr. LeBlanc, they just want to make sure they're complying with the OMA. So, but the truth is that it's on the agenda, and you're not taking action on this, but you can certainly entertain a comment.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you. Jamie, no disrespect to you, I just wanted to make sure we were legal, I just.
I totally understand.
I don't want any more egg on my face, I want it in my plate for breakfast, not on my face.
James LeBlanc, forty-three, has a street. There's some formatting stuff, which is obviously minor, but that was the only material thing that I found, but that's not the first time I found a mistake. The Auditor General can also tell you that last year's financial statements, I found a seven-point-two-million-dollar error. It's the amount that this town, Coventry, owns west, owes to West Woolworth for the IMA. We've been in that contract since nineteen eighty-three. Sewers actually started in nineteen seventy-three, but we've owed West Woolworth a lot of money ever since that contract was signed. And as you know, we own two-point-two-million gallons that, of sewage per day that we don't even come close to using, one-tenth, actually less than that. And I had seen in West Woolworth's statements that they had a receivable from us, but there was nothing in our statements saying that we owed them. So when I asked Bob Tebow, he said I had to ask the external auditors, and I never got a response, so I talked to the Auditor General, and now we have a two-page disclosure saying that we owe them. It was seven-point-two last year, now it's six-point-eight million. But, so this isn't the first time that I found something, which is why I actually dedicate a whole weekend to review two-hundred-and-nine pages and computate everything. So there was nothing else material this year, but this is the second time that I had actually found something, just wanted to clarify.
Well, thank you. Thank you for spending a weekend reading this.
Okay. John, continue if you like, what have you got left there?
I believe that was it, honestly. I was just going to cover over that, that little bit that was found, and exactly what we did to correct it. So the corrected financial statements are online at this time, everything is. So, the corrected financial statements are online at this time. Everything is all up to date. And also, one last thing is that the OIG also said that we would not have to do a restatement of our financial, financial statements. We do not. Came directly from them.
John, thank you. I like the way you set the graphs up this time. Much, much better. Thank you. Much easier to understand.
I think I might throw in a, a data point at the very end to show for the subtotals next time as well, exactly that percentage, too. So, it makes it a little easier to see.
Anything you can do to make it simpler for guys like me, I would appreciate, you know. But I know you're working hard on this. I know you have been working hard. And I know sometimes it feels like it's coming at you from every available angle, imaginable angle, and it is, and it is. But you're young. You'll get through it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the council at all? Well, thank you very much, John. We appreciate your diligence. Okay, the, the next thing on the agenda, Madam Clerk, if you would read this.
Appointing one member to the Tax Assessment Board of Review.
Okay, we, we actually interviewed two applicants in an executive session. We want to thank both applicants for, for coming forward. And unfortunately, we only have one position on this, on this particular board. But we do, we do appreciate you coming in, and hopefully, you know, both of you will still be interested in other things as we move along. So, I will accept a motion for an appointment.
Mr. President, I'd like to recommend that Mr. Christopher Anderson Esquire be appointed to this board.
Okay, and I will accept the second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion at all on here?
No, I just wanted to say that we interviewed both, as Mrs. Dixon had indicated, and they were both very good candidates. And I hope that, I hope Gary is interested in other things in the town. I'm sure Mrs. Dixon will be in touch with you in the future to try to make, make sure, whether you like it or not, you're interested in other boards and commissions in town. Because you bring a lot to the table, just not, in this case, we decided to go a different way. That's all. But thank you for your application, and thank you for coming in for the interview.
And before we vote, I would just like to say that I did post this about two to three times on Nextdoor, which is a social media service, which goes out to many people in the District One area. I also announced it at two town hall meetings that I had, and I also posted it on Facebook. And so, this has been out there for, you know, a couple of months, two to three months, and it's been very difficult to get people from District One to apply for this position. And I'm very happy that we finally did have two very good qualified candidates to come forward. So, thank you to both of you for coming forward, seeing that there was a need for someone to represent our district on the support, important board. So, thank you so much, and we're very pleased to have two good candidates available to us. And, Mr. Anderson, we're looking for good things from you. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And opposed? No. Thank you, four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And if you'd like, we can do this swearing-in right at the present time, if you'd like to come forward.
Raise your right hand, please. Do solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful to the state, support the laws and constitution thereof, and that you will well and truly execute the duties and responsibilities as a member of the Assessment Board of Review for the term which you were appointed, or until another be engaged in your place. So, help you guide. Thank you.
That's right. You can't, gotta do it again. Slide right on down. Great, thank you. And just so everybody knows, this was to, he's appointed to serve the unexpired term of, it was of Christopher Holstrom, which expires November first, twenty-twenty-two, is when this term goes to. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is public comment, but Madam Clerk, would you read what we have on there, please?
Operating and capital improvement budget for the Town of Coventry FY twenty-twenty, open discussion and public comment. Note, this public hearing is in addition to the public hearing required by the Town Charter, which is currently scheduled for April eighth, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, thank you. It, actually, what I'm going to do, even, you know, with the public comment, I know that, that Mr. Cody asked to, to put some additional commentary and this up onto the agenda, because we had such a short agenda this evening, we figured it'd be as, you know, rather than waste any time, et cetera. If people have questions, comments, et cetera, on, on the budget, opinions, suggestions, this is an additional time to come forward and speak. But with that, Mr. Cody, have you got anything to, you know, add on that at all that...
Well, I was in, meeting with Ed, I'm sorry, with the town manager. And he was, we were discussing how short the agenda was going to be. And I asked Ed, well, since it's going to be such a short agenda, I said, can we add public comment, but specific to the municipal budget? I said, no, it's, it's not a public hearing. It's not, I just want the people that attend the meeting and that have actually looked over the budget and are actually interested in what's going on in the town to have as much opportunity as possible to come to that podium and address this council. And because of the way it's listed, we can actually answer questions. If you have questions, we can actually, tonight, instead of sitting here like Mickey the Mook, because it's public comment, not public question and answer, like it is at every other meeting, tonight, we can actually have a rapport with each other and, and talk about things in the budget that are a concern to you. So, that's why I asked the town manager. I want the taxpayers to have as much opportunity as possible to address this body when it comes to a budget that's going to, that affects a large part of their family's yearly income and the services that are provided because of that. So, that's why I asked him to do this. And I don't, listen, there's, there's not a lot of different people here tonight that aren't usually here at every monthly meeting, unfortunately. And as council members, we see this over our tenure, sitting on the council. It's basically the same people, week after week after week, that come to the meetings unless there is a hot-button issue that people show up to address us about, you know. So, I mean, I think we're fortunate to have this many people show up, so I'm not complaining in any way, shape, or form. But I want you to be able to come up and address us and actually get some answers to any questions that you have, as long as we can provide the answers. Finance directors here, our town managers, I mean, so if you have a question that's concerning the budget, we should be able to address that. And I just want you to have that opportunity to do that, so...
And with that being said, actually, Ed, you can take it from there, too. We want to give people as much time as they need. If you've got questions, we'll, we'll take it at length. Just ask that we be considerate of everybody. If someone has got questions, that, we want everybody to have an opportunity, so... At that, I'm gonna open it up to a public comment. Ed, did you have...
I just want to make, I just want to remind everybody that next Monday, we have a work session on the budget. And the following Monday, we have a public hearing on, on the budget. So, Gary had suggested, or Mr. Cody had suggested about doing this. I thought this was a great idea to see if we can get some additional input. The budget's been out there a while. It's on the website. I'm hoping to get some feedback from some people. I hope some people understand where we, where this budget is, what's going on with it, and the mandatory increases that we're looking at on this budget. But, well, we're looking to hear any input that we can get from, from the public.
James LeBlanc, forty-three, has a street. I appreciate you guys doing this. I actually, I couldn't believe that you guys were allowing us to make comments so early, but I appreciate it. My first question, what's the actual cap that we can go to this year?
Four point.
I know, but what's dollar amount?
Two, two-point-eight million dollars, if, two-point-eight.
So, with the contracts that were finalized last year, what was the estimated projected cost for this year's budget?
For the school or for the town?
For both, for the police and the teachers. What was the project, I mean, estimate? I'm not asking for specifics.
The police was about a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar increase, with, they received a two-percent pay raise, and it's about a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars is the cost on that.
And the school?
The school, I don't have the exact figures. I don't know if Mr. Pearson would have them. It was somewhere in the ballpark. It was a million...
No, he wouldn't. Why would he?
A million, a million-three.
Hang on, let me...
Million-four.
I just wanted to get a...
Yeah.
Where we actually knew we were gonna be, because when I look at the muni and the school combined, we're asking for four-point-nine million.
The school right now is, and again, these are rough numbers, and they're not finalized. The school right now is also looking at one-point-five million in additional state aid, and that's fluxing a bit. It started at one point at about one-point-nine, and then some numbers they're, they're working on, and we haven't got finalized numbers on that. So, right now, the last time I spoke to Sarah, she was saying one-point-five is what they were expecting at this point.
The two-point-eight million is, is the amount on the tax levy...
On the tax levy that we can go on.
That we can increase. I know, but the increase, if you combine the requests for muni and school, it's four-point-nine million, and we can only go to two-point-eight.
Right, right. Well, four-point-nine million, but again, where the schools are deriving additional revenues as well.
You're just wanting to qualify that, that's all. Yeah, the school, the school itself was looking for three-point-three, three-point-four million dollars, three-point-four million dollars in increase, total between town and...
Scary when you add the muni and the school together. That's, that was my point.
And the school, the school has had a lot of mandatory cost increases that they were facing as well.
Understood.
Just like us, they're, most of that, a good portion of that is those pay increases, the pension increases, things that we have absolutely, you know, the pension, we have no control over.
Understood. If you add up the pensions for the school, the muni, and the debt service, it's like almost thirteen million dollars that this town is paying.
The, the big...
But I understand this is the muni discussion, so I, I just wanted to bring attention on the issued FY eighteen financial statements. It has on page ninety-four and ninety-five of those statements, it has a required supplementary information, budgetary comparison schedule of budget to actual. And when you look at those pages, what I was shocked to see, if you look at the budget for FY eighteen, it says seventy-seven-point-four, seventy-seven-point-four million dollars was the budget. But we only spent seventy-six-point-five million. So, there's nine-hundred-thousand dollars of expenses that we didn't spend. But I know that, so we saved, let's just call it nine-hundred, but then the budget asks for, let's just call it two million. So, I guess if we saved nine, why did we have to give an additional two-point-six for Lash's budget? I, I just, I'm just concerned.
I'll make a quick statement on that one. I haven't done the full numbers on last year's, but I do know that they froze the budget around April last year in order to help that out, right? There was a significant, so...
What do you mean, froze the budget?
Froze spending.
So, a finance director and town manager, we can sit there and tell all the department heads, you can't spend any money. So, let's say, for example, DPW wants to go ahead and patch a hole in the road, we'll say, no, that's not approved, because you can't spend any more money. So, we'll freeze what people can spend in order to, if things are going, and that's why expenditures are really looked at all the time, really in depth. Because if we're watching a budget going up high, we'll say, sorry, you can stop, can't spend any more. From what I understand, Bob T. left around April-May timeframe, and that's about when the freeze took place. So, that...
A month worth of expenses that you guys said, no more spending.
Exactly. So, you had a quarter in there where there was a lot, there was a freeze pretty much across the entire board, where they stopped spending. And that kicked into that, plus...
I guess my, my point, though, is that those expenses, they weren't necessary.
Right.
Because we still, the town still survived.
You would think that, but then, but then you have DPW that had, because they couldn't repair vehicles and things of that nature, that it backlogged, and now you're putting it on to this year. Yeah, you're paying for it now. You have expenditures around the town, and if you look at any building around the town that built in apartment could repair, but they couldn't repair, so that got backlogged into now. So...
I appreciate the insight.
Yeah, that's, that's part of it.
Jamie, that's what you're seeing, the nine-hundred-thousand is actually spending. Correct, and that doesn't include, we were about three-hundred-thousand under revenue projections on the budget, so that brought that down. The vast majority of that six-hundred that was left came out of, a good chunk was the PD, where they had officers on, on... Military, military leave, and there was also substantial, about three-hundred-thousand for DPW, that because of the freeze, that, that he was unable to spend. One of the things we would... Yeah, no, no, I understand. No, I appreciate the questions, believe me. But that's where, that's why you're looking at that. But the two million you're talking about, where, where were you getting that from, that...
The, he's, what he's really looking at, I think, is the actual net position of what was actually saved for the revenues, the actual revenues above what we were projected to collect. So, we had more revenues than was expended.
It's the nine-hundred-four. Yeah, the nine-hundred-four.
I know what you're talking about, Jamie.
Yeah, it was nine, it was nine-hundred.
Jamie, I know what you're talking about. I follow, I'm tracking. One thing I looked at as well, when you, when I looked at the expenditures from fiscal year eighteen, take a look at the bottom line as far as a percentage of excess on, for each department, and you'll see that with the PD, what he was saying was that was a, a large chunk in the employee's line.
I'm with you. I appreciate the insight. I'm just asking questions here, trying to get a better understanding. I mean, based off of my research, if you look at the last ten years, I just feel like every single year, we're asking around two to three-and-a-half million dollars, give or take, every single year. I just, I don't understand why we can't try to level fund one year. I, I know, it's the sins of the past. I, I hear that all the time.
There were, there were several years ago, Jamie, where they did do, they did two years of level funding, one year for the town and school department, and one year for just the school department, and they kept that, that increase very low. And what's, what happened is, part of that is what's got us into the point where we are now, because they underfunded things. And what's, what's happening even in this year, we're facing, you're seeing six-hundred, nine-hundred-thousand, that's excess. Reality is about six-hundred because of the three-hundred under in revenue. All that, all that did was, though, in DPW's case, repairs and trucks that should have taken place last year didn't. It's pushed off to this year. That savings, even though it appears to be, the vast majority of our increases, if you look across the board, and I can only, only can speak on the muni side, those are typically mandatory increases that are coming in for pensions, medical. And again, our, our pay raises, when they do get them, are typically not, not that expensive overall. When I say not that expensive, comparative.
Yeah, I guess my, my whole point with, with sharing that is our budget process uses a budget column. And my point there is, if you look at actuals, there's nine-hundred-and-four savings, is my point. So, when you're doing budget to budget, it almost, I would rather use actuals somewhere on here.
We do, and that's, well, we, we did a lot of that this year. That's what we were doing.
That's my point.
No, 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 believe me. One of the, one of the things we're, we are facing, that we faced this year, we're trying to do the whole process different, we've, from the start to finish. Tonight, another example of different than what we've done.
This is new.
And we looked at all of these line items. We, we spent a lot of time working on those, so we're looking at actuals. We're looking at five-year, five-year...
Spending. So, what we're doing, Jamie, is we also sat down with each individual department head, and we looked at what they spent last year and the previous years and said, what are you actually spending? Because what ended up happening in the past was they were doing what you were budgeted, and then you're just gonna say, okay, well, I'm gonna get it again. But then I have an entire binder of transfers. They would just be robbing from this account and putting it in this account, so my actuals were always off. So, that's where we started this time. And then we said, okay, well, if you're having a contract, like fuel costs, what's your contract cost now? Let's have that, let's correct that line item. So, that's what we did, line by line.
I'm just gonna get into some departments now.
And just one other, one other comment about that nine-oh-four. If you go back and look at the last two years, one year was eleven-thousand at the end of the...
Oh, no, I saw that.
And I think the other one was thirty-three. So, this is actually the first year that, that we were...
I just thought that was very material, that's the only reason I wanted to bring it up. Department six-ten, sorry, six-twenty is the tax assessor.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-dollar increase.
Yeah, so I, I understand what that is. It's the revow, and it's an update, right? But my question is, is that the amount that is the total cost, and then the state's gonna reimburse us?
That is the total cost. The state's gonna reimburse us about a hundred, hundred-and-twelve-thousand, hundred-and-ten-thousand in that ballpark.
But why wouldn't the net expense be here?
Because you have to budget by expenditures. I have... Because you have to budget by expenditures, I have to put it in that line item as an expenditure, not a net, I have the revenues, I have the revenue on the other side, on the revenue side, you'll see, uh, the, uh, reimbursement from a state for taxes, so I'll have that reimbursement come in on the revenue side, but I have to put it in an expenditure, I can't put net.
Okay, I just would like to know which line it was, that's all, but I can email you.
Uh, can I make one little, I just see, I looked at, I saw a note that you had, and you had, where did these funds go? When, um, let, uh, let me just clarify something, I've heard a little bit of misunderstanding when it comes to, not necessarily on you, this is a misunderstanding when it comes to a budget. And so, let's say that money isn't spent in a budget, the money doesn't go and get taken out of the general fund and dropped into a department, and then what? It, no, it, it stays in the general fund, so we have a bank account, and people are authorized to spend a certain amount of it. If they don't spend the money, the money didn't go anywhere, it didn't get removed out of the budget, it didn't get rem, or didn't get removed out of the, the checking account, it's still there, they're just authorized to spend that money, so.
Who gives them the right to author, to spend it?
You all, you all, so you're the more authorized to spend it, that's what the budget is. The budget.
Voted on it?
So the budget, yeah, the, well, the budget itself, when it comes to the expenditures, what you see up here, that's what your voters are saying, you are authorized to spend that much money. And if you don't spend it, it stays in the checking account, and that's where, when you read in the Moody's report, when he says your residuals that are left over, that's what's left over, as far as what we have in the bank account, what we can part of our total assets, so if they're spending, if they're not spending the money, it just doesn't disappear, it doesn't just go in someone's pocket, it stays in the bank. It, that's part of our reserves, so, just to clarify that.
Over a certain dollar threshold, it had to go in front of the town council, it would be approved.
For what are you talking about, specifically like, as far as the expenditure?
What was that, Jamie?
I, I said, I thought an expense over a certain amount had to be approved by the town council.
Anything over ten thousand dollars has to be approved by the, by the council.
I've been to a lot of meetings, and I, I just, I haven't heard of, this is money from last year, and I, I wanna get approval of where we're gonna spend, but I, I think this is going down to different conversations.
I was just trying to, I was just trying to clarify the, the money that doesn't disappear.
It's fine, I, um, police department, uh, Department seven ten, um, there's a line, it's account one dash one oh one dash three dash seven one zero dash two four six zero zero, it says maintenance dash, I just didn't know, it's forty-three grand, four eighty-seven. I mean, there's other maintenance lines, it says maintenance office, there's maintenance cars, but I just didn't know what that was for, it was forty-three grand. Um, I can email you if you don't have the answer right away.
No, that, that one on the, on the maintenance is, is, it should be the building, that should be building maintenance on, on that.
Okay.
That's a, uh.
Which building though, is that, is that the old building, or is the new building?
That's a, first of all, when it comes to the description, the constraint is the fact that I'm dealing with a nineteen ninety-nine system, and I can't expand that column for, for formatting, so.
Understood.
When it comes to that part, uh, so I don't know if it is the old building or not.
Okay.
Personally speaking, but if you send me an email, I will just be more than happy to get back to you.
Cause I did see an expensive sixteen grand in building maintenance, uh, Department eight fifty, I believe, for sixteen thousand for the old police building, so I didn't know why we needed it in two places.
No, what's happening on that, what you saw on, on the.
I think it's Department eight fifty?
The eight fifty one, that's an anticipation of what's gonna have to be spent.
On the old building.
On the old building, once they've vacated the building.
This was piggybacking off of that amount, that's all.
Again, the, the, once the bill, once the building is no longer the PD, it becomes the responsibility of DPW, and they have to start funding on, on maintaining that building.
Understood, um, same thing, seven ten police department, there's a, a retirement coverage line, um, adjusted budget was fifteen grand, actually sixteen rounded, and they asked for fifty-four. But then it was completely wiped out by the manager. So, they actually have a, a zero for that line, even though they spent fifteen, so my, my proposal, obviously, we're not voting on anything and taking action. But, um, if you look at Department nine, uh, nine fifty, which is town general, there's a, uh, there was zero for, for the adjusted budget. And, um, the requested budget is thirty, so my suggestion would be, take half of that thirty and give it to the police, because the police clearly need it.
No, what, what happened on, what happens on that, Jamie, is that fifteen last year was, we had a retirement, and that's where that money goes, it pays, if they have an officer that retires, to cover those going out the door expenses. Originally, the chief had put in for, there's a long-term captain, he was thinking that may, may have been retiring, and as we get deeper into the budget, it looks like he's not going to, and that's why that money came out of there. The thirty that you see in the town general, that's to cover the, any of the municipal employees if they go. And we've got several letting.
No police going on retirement next year?
It doesn't look it, according to what the Colonel was saying, is the one, there's one officer and, uh, a captain, and, uh, he doesn't think he's gonna go.
Okay, just wanted to ask the question. Uh, motor vehicles and police department, they asked for a hundred and forty-one thousand, they got zero, they essentially only get the lease purchase, which they were budgeted last year, and they get it again this year.
I think that was.
I just feel like if they asked for a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, they must clearly need something, but the manager column took it out.
I believe part of that was the fact that they wanted to buy out that lease purchase agreement as well, so that was the total, what, no, okay, so I was wrong.
That was for three vehicles, that was for three vehicles.
Okay, they wanted to purchase the vehicles outright, okay.
But do we, so that we can't get them, new vehicles?
You're looking at the rest of the numbers.
I understand, I just thought that was a.
Believe me, I'd love to, I'd love to give it to them, I'm looking at these numbers and.
If anybody else wants to go, you're more than welcome.
Hey, Jamie, you know, if you could find something like that, that's fine, I, I mean, even when, when we did this at the, uh, the last meeting, I even told them, I, I'm contracted to get a, a bump in pay.
No, I know, you said it, you're not taking it.
Like, whatever we can do, I'm with you.
I appreciate it, um, I mean, the thing with the muni, you guys, I feel like deserve, obviously, some money from the levy. But the school clearly needs a lot, and i- it's hard, I mean, I'm not trying to take money away, I'm just trying to share it between departments, is what I'm trying to do here.
Well, that's, that's what we tried to do as well, on how we split this up, and again, we're still working on the revenue numbers, we're still working on some of these expense numbers, we're waiting for some, for some, um, uh, costs to come in that haven't come in yet on finalized, we, we've got our numbers up a little bit higher in some areas to cover those until we get a finalized number. So there's still gonna be some shifting that's going on over the next couple of weeks on this, this isn't, these obviously are not done by any means, but I also looked at what the proposal, and again, it's gonna be entirely up to the council on where that goes at the, at the end of the day. But my, my proposal was meant to try to share between the muni side, as well as the school side, knowing that they've got some expenses, they've got some big expenses coming up, there's some changes that have taken place, and I'm just trying to be fair to everybody and not end up in the boat where we've ended up in the past, so that's why we're, you're seeing some of it. We.
The hardest thing is that there's, there's contracted costs, and I feel like when those contracts were signed, we knew we were gonna spend so much more, but we needed it elsewhere too, so I just, um, that's the frustrating part.
Jamie, that's, and that's what I've been trying to, uh, because I have met, um, with this, with the superintendent, and I have met with Sarah. And I've met with our town manager, and, and what I'm trying to get across to both sides is that we have contractual obligations. This, on the school side, the school committee negotiated those contracts, and the town council ratified those contracts.
Agreed.
On the municipal side, the town council negotiated contracts, the town council ratified those contracts. As far as I'm concerned, those contracts are law, those contracts have to be met, we signed them in good faith, and our employees entered into them in good faith, and also ratified those contracts. But what I'm trying to tell both sides is, rather than trying to hit a home run here this year, when you know that the financial stability of this town is in question. Excuse me, concentrate on meeting your contractual obligations, not adding positions, not doing other things, buying new police vehicles, but concentrate on meeting your contractual obligations, and let's present a budget to the taxpayers that maybe ain't gonna call for a total four percent tax increase, again, this year, or again, next year, or again, the year after. Let's give the town an opportunity to turn that corner, do what has to be done contractually, I'm not saying to not honor what we entered into, but maybe we can get by another year with the police vehicles we have, we, we've got a fairly new fleet, most of it, you know, um, maybe we can get by for the next couple of years with what we have. Everybody wants new, hell, I'd like a new car.
So would I.
Can't afford one.
I agree.
So, I don't have one, but I would like one, it, so let, if we're going to, because I, I've said it publicly, I'll say it again, I'll probably say it a hundred more times before we present the actual budget. I don't believe I can bring myself to vote to approve a budget that calls for a four percent tax increase, I, I, I just don't.
I met with town councilwoman Dixon, I said the same thing, I said the, the three and a half, four percent needs to stop.
Right, so, so.
Away from this town.
We're, we're getting where we need to be with our bonds, we've got some that are coming to maturity and are gonna go away over the next two years, and that's gonna free up some revenue.
Agreed.
So, you know what, we've got a couple of lean years here, let's.
Work together and.
Meet what we are contracted to meet, and live within our means. And, and quit throwing it all on the back of the taxpayers, because the taxpayers don't have anymore, I don't. I, you know, I work for a living just like everybody else, I went from being a two-income family to a one-income family, and I still have to make ends meet. And, and I can't do it, I don't wanna leave this town, I've been here my whole life. But I'm, I, I'm gonna reach a breaking point, just like everybody sitting here tonight, is eventually gonna reach a breaking point. The town shouldn't be the cause of that breaking point.
I agree.
We shouldn't, so, I, I've been preaching to both sides, and I know I've been preaching to the choir, but concentrate on what we have, what we have to meet contractually. And forget everything else this year, let's just, you know as well as I do, the taxpayers, a, a, a lot of taxpayers don't have a good taste in their mouth about an all-day referendum instead of a financial town meeting, listen, I personally am convinced.
The choir.
I, I, I personally am convinced that no matter what we present for a budget, it's gonna get shot down because people have hard feelings about some things in town, I hope I'm wrong. I hope I'm wrong, but we gotta present a budget that the taxpayers can live with, the flip side of that is, we have to present a budget that allows the town and the school to meet their contractual obligations that were already entered into, you know? And, and we have to do a better job moving forward when we negotiate our contracts.
Absolutely.
You know, the two years, the last time I was on the council, you know, I, I, I was a, I was a great believer in maintenance of effort. Maintenance of effort, and, and, and we were successful for two years, you know, um, but, but it gets to a point where for whatever reason, the, the parents of the students in this town end up feeling like we're shorting the school department on things that their children need. So the parents come out in support of the school department, and I understand that, I, my, my daughter was educated in this town, you know, and, and, and it seems like when that happens, people that sit here, and, and people that sit on the school committee, and I can certainly understand it, because as thankless as I believe this job is, you couldn't you, there's not enough money in the world to pay me to go sit on the school committee, you can forget that, that's not part of my future, um. But we feel pressured, so, so, you know, you, you, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I feel like in the past, in the town of Coventry, the squeaker wheel has always gotten to grease. And, and that doesn't work for everybody, that certainly doesn't work for a majority of the people, you know, um, we need. And I hope I'm successful, I hope that, that's what this whole council's trying to do, I hope we're successful. But we have to be able to work in partnership with Mr. Pearson and the people on the school committee.
I get it.
To be able to present a budget that the taxpayers can live with.
Understood, uh.
I'd like to make a comment to that.
Sorry.
Um, I appreciate, um, Mr. Cody's, um, Mr. Cody's passion in, uh, talking about, um, I need to meet our contractual obligations, but I am not willing to put a stake in the ground and say, we just meet our contractual obligations and we do nothing else. I think we have to take things case by case, maybe it's not three more police vehicles, but maybe it's something else, and I think we need to decide case by case what is important to the voters in the town. And what's important to our future and the vision that we have for our community, so I'm not willing to say just meet the contractual obligations and nothing else, because I think we need to be open-minded and make some decisions about what's the right thing to do in many aspects and for many departments in our town, so Mr. Cody is very eloquent, and I appreciate his eloquence, but he doesn't speak for all of us, it's his opinion, and each of us have to weigh in on our own opinion when it comes time to, to make some decisions, but thank you very much for your comments, um, but we all, we all have a little difference of opinion, I believe, thank you.
I appreciate the comment, uh, again, I don't know if anybody else has any comments? Excellent, okay, um, eight thirty, roads and bridges, uh, temporary services, uh, went from adjusted budget of sixty-three thousand to, uh, department request of a hundred and two thousand. I just didn't know what was planned.
Which, which, which one?
Uh, this is eight thirty, roads and bridges, and it's temporary services, went from sixty-two to a hundred and two thousand.
That is, there were increases in contracts for uh, the drain cleaning, drain cleaning, and there was another one as well.
Savings though, when Kevin was up speaking, Mr. McGee, I thought he said that there was savings related to that.
The contract is up substantially.
And, and again, that's another one that was, um, well, I wanna say, we'll say that one was, uh, under underspent, or not underspent, but it was given less than we had to be, that one was, I saw a lot of transfers going in that one over the years too.
Okay, and then, uh, repairs, streets, uh, went from thirty-five thousand to eighty thousand?
It's just a move, if you look up, you'll see another one that, it was killed, uh, it was forty-five thousand.
The asphalt.
The asphalt.
Yeah, I saw that, I just didn't, are, are there projects planned that, uh?
It was just to put it together and change where we had it in the budget, that's all it was.
No, no, I understand, the eighty thousand though, the net eighty thousand that's in repairs for streets, are there a list of streets that are gonna get repaired that you guys know about?
No, this is patching, and this isn't any major, major repairs on that eighty thousand, that's.
Jamie.
Understood.
Eight, eight, eighty thousand.
I know, it's nothing, I get it, I just didn't know if there's, uh, trying to see those projects or something.
This is to try to keep them from, uh, turning into swimming holes.
Understood, I'm almost done, I promise, um. Yeah, it was, uh, in eight fifty, it says former police station for sixteen thousand three thirty, I just didn't, is that, is that?
That's because he's gonna be taking over responsibility for that once it's vacated.
Okay. Um, this kinda goes with every single department, but for eight sixty, um, it says regular employees, and there's an increase of like twenty thousand dollars. I just didn't know if it was possible for each department to kinda show the salary increase contractual, and then salary increase non-contractual, so that the taxpayers know if it's contract-related, or if it's just the department asking for more pay, and I'm not just, I'm just, I just, eight sixty, it's probably one of the larger ones, ask, oh, well, I mean, police was the largest, but there's a lot of people there. It's close to twenty thousand dollars, and I just didn't know if there could be a little more transparency when it comes to the, uh, salary line.
No, in fact, uh.
I know that we've been working on, on an actual, the, way where we can show what the, each employee is without giving the name, but showing the position and showing the required contract cost, and I know for, uh, that, yeah, that.
Understood.
We're trying to work on that, cause I, as well with.
A little transparency would just help.
There, there, there shouldn't be any, any of these increases in there.
Yeah, we went through, we went, we went with every single employee.
They're not, they're not, uh, they're not contract increases, because their contract is up in, uh, the end of the year, and that hasn't been negotiated, so those increases are not in there. There, he happens to have a bunch that are hitting a step increase, all pretty much at the same time, from what I remember on, on this one, we went through this because of the number, that's one of the few that went up, uh.
A decent amount.
A decent amount, yeah, they're one of the very few.
Totally get it, um, this is, uh, recreation department, nine ten, um, she, I think it's, she requested, um, the production and construction of twenty-seven thousand, but that was declined by the manager, and then, I think there's also another request. Sorry, yep, under property maintenance, there was a request for thirty-three thousand, and that was kicked down by fifteen thousand dollars. And what I'm trying to get at is, this department is asking for, I don't know, let's just call it thirty-eight thousand for property maintenance and, and maybe construction, but was declined. But if you go to sorry, I just gotta find it, hang on one sec.
While you're looking for that, I know that, for example, um, Raina's been looking at repairing her building, it, that building is pretty much in a, it can use a lot of love, we'll say. There are impact fees that, that she gets for her department, which is teased out, that she can use for capital projects, that I know that we're looking at repairing other things, like, for example, the basketball court, that's one, fencing, light poles. So there, she's getting, we're, we're making it happen in other ways, um, and using impact fees for moves like that, so that way we were able to save money, but at the same time, still address the, the needs of that department.
Cause I was, uh, what I, what I was gonna refer to as eight fifty building maintenance, there's a line annex repair.
Yeah.
Uh, the adjusted budget was fifty-three thousand, and now they're asking for another. Uh, the adjusted budget was fifty-three thousand, and now they're asking for another forty thousand? I didn't realize that we were spending a hundred grand on the annex building.
Yeah.
What, what are we doing there?
Yeah, it's not just repair, if I'm not mistaken. The re, annex repair is also, it covers the cost of, of ma, um. Of the heat, electricity, all of those costs that are, that are going on as well. Uh, but yeah, that building is, uh.
It's old.
There's issues, and they, and it's being utilized.
Interesting.
It's being utilized more and more by the pox and rec department. Uh, it's being utilized by.
Company, by police zoning, by engineering, and as well as the school, and human services uses the building.
Yeah, so there's, that's getting, it's getting a substantial amount of use over there.
All right, two more questions. I appreciate all the answers. I do. I just feel like a hundred grand every two years, that's a lot of money for repairs, but, whatever. Uh, nine-fifty town general, um, there's a line item called electrical service. Adjusted budget was forty-nine thousand, and department request is a hundred and thirty thousand.
And there was a change from one of the other ones that's, uh, it was all moved into one, one, there was coming, it was being paid by two, to two different companies. In two different ways, and it's all been consolidated in. Let me pull that up.
What, what, what actually is, is it just like, just to turn the lights on? Is that what it is?
That's exactly what it is.
But we're going from forty-nine to a hundred and thirty, but you're saying that we're combining something?
For example, Jamie, I, I was surprised at this one, cause I, I look at all the, the, the electrical costs that come in and things of that nature, and I, I ask questions like, what's this pole light bill for? You know, a hundred dollars that I get every month. That, it, it's like, for example, a pump station has to have electricity going to it to have. The security monitoring and anything like that. And you have all these little buildings across the town, plus you're, you're doing this right now.
Jamie, if you look, if you look above.
Yep.
Uh, five, uh, one-on-one, eight-nine-fifty, forty-four, one-hundred, is decreased by seventy-six thousand, and that is, uh, that is also light.
From one forty-six.
Electric and light.
So why do we, so what?
Again, it's just.
Consolidations and things of that nature.
Two similar line items, it's moved, being moved into.
Maybe, okay.
To move it down where it belongs.
Understood. And then my last question is, um, nine-seventy debt service. There's a principal line, there's an interest line. Does that include the debt related to, uh, the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank and the sewer program, or does it not?
Not in the sewer program.
Not in the sewer program, no.
That is separate. This is for general obligation bonds for.
Only.
Bus, for, for town projects and, uh.
General obligation.
So do we as taxpayers get to see what the principal and interest projection is for the sewer debt, anywhere?
I'll put it out, we'll put it out on the web for you.
Yeah. Oh, but I'm just asking if we, if taxpayers ever get to see that before.
It's, they're generally in, uh, the special revenue funds because it's an enterprise fund, and we're trying right now to actually. Do this, I'm trying to actually create an enterprise department, a sewer enterprise department as we speak. While doing everything else here, I'm literally trying to create. What should have been created a while ago. And part of that is creating an, an entire budget for this, and that means. Putting in that, those line items. So I'm working towards that goal to make it absolutely where it should have been.
And when, and when you say that the sewer enterprise fund is gonna go in the black.
Correct.
That's subsequent to the general fund paying two hundred thousand of the expenses for the sewer fund?
That would be with that two hundred thousand.
Understood.
And that also includes.
And that includes also, we're looking at and proposing, again, if approved, we're proposing a, an employee, a sewer employee. And administrator to. Start taking control of all the different pieces. We've got a lot of different bodies that do all the different parts of the sewer system. Uh, the, the permits and all of that. We don't have anybody that's overseeing all of that at this point. John does some of it, I'm doing some of it now. So we're looking at proposing, bringing somebody on by January, half, halftime, and bringing somebody on. And that includes that cost, so. And if, we're still projecting at this point, again, rough budgets, still working on it, about forty-two thousand dollars over, uh, in, uh.
Revenue exceeding the expenditures.
Yeah.
And in your opinion.
In our best.
That's all it is, that's all it is, Jamie.
In your opinion though.
Based on.
If, if we had to pay principal, cause I, correct me if I'm wrong, we refinanced all of our sewer debts, so we're paying interest only for three years.
Not all of it.
The majority. There was a decent chunk that was refinanced.
One bond.
One bond is all it was. That was, that was a single bond that we did a refi on.
Not to include West Wallwreck. How much was that bond?
Five-six, I think it might have been, five-five. I think it was a year ago.
I'm just saying, if the principal amount was.
It was only.
Five-point-eight-seven.
It was effectively one bond that we did. No, you're right, and that's why we, we are moving, we've gotta move forward with the rest of this. To compensate for that, that savings, that temporary savings that we've got there. You know, the rate study.
This is the point we're gonna have to start paying principal on the five-point-five. This is why we gotta make those moves now, I'm saying.
The rate study, we've also got, we're gonna be presenting, uh, Arnold Road and Hazard Street on those assessments up at front of the, uh, the sewer, sewer board. And then in front of the town council, so we can start getting those into the system. They're not in there yet. So that's gonna be done as well as. Uh, except the rate study, possible mineral use, all the things. We've also been looking at a plan to assist people who are, uh, have an issue with. The assessments, something that hasn't been done before. And again, all of this will have to go up in front of the council. Once it's complete, once the report's in from the order to general, and then what we're working on is, are a lot of the things that. Recommendations that, that are gonna be in, gonna be in that report, and we're trying to get ahead of the, the curve and get some of this stuff prepped so we can get it done during this next fiscal. And get us on track to where we need to be, when those, when those principal amounts start kicking in, kicking in.
I'd also recommend looking at the ordinance as well.
We are, we're looking at that, we're looking.
It's on my desk right now with the FAQs.
I really appreciate it.
Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks for your questions.
Appreciate the insight.
Kate Whittinghall, five-eighty-six, Old Main Street. You guys are doing a good job. I'm very impressed, to a certain point. Um, does anyone know, speaking of revenue, the, um, status of the receivership? That has been going on for some time. Does anyone know?
The Center of New England.
Yes. Does anyone know the status of this?
Well, it's, it's still pending, and the receiver is still. Working on a plan to bring it out of receivership and to sell the assets in order to do that.
That's been ongoing. I was just wondering whether or not there was any.
Specific to the town, um, this Wednesday, in Superior Court. The court will consider the, the receiver's motion to approve the consent order that this council approved on, I believe, February twenty-fifth. And hopefully the court will approve it. If, if that is done, if the court approves it. I think I can speak, uh, objectively about this. I think it, it will. Take a very large step toward bringing, uh. The promise of Center of New England closer to realization as a park that was designed for. Industrial and residential development, and so.
And as one of the creditors, will we get any money? Do you know?
It's all in the consent judgment, and, um, we're getting some money. Uh, but I can tell you, we, we made concessions as well.
Yes.
That, um.
So we'll get less than we hoped for?
Um.
Possibly.
Depends on who the, the we is. I mean, obviously.
Cause that money's gonna go into, I would imagine, a general fund or something. It'll do something. I was just wondering if we had.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we would have hoped for a hundred percent recovery, but in a receivership. Where someone has drained all the assets away, seek, you know, in a very covert manner for many years.
No, I understand that. I was just wondering if we were any closer to seeing if we were gonna get any dollars.
We, we, I think the town council made a prudent decision to approve. The proposed consent judgment, which they did after negotiating for, I think, the better part of three years.
Yes, it's been ongoing for some time, yes.
It's a tough decision, but you hate to.
So possibly not, then you're saying?
What's that?
What, when do you think this, this decision will be made?
The decision by the judge?
Correct.
It's scheduled for Wednesday.
It's scheduled for Wednesday.
Just the component of. The consent order with the town of Coventry. There's much more to the receivership than just the town of Coventry.
I'm just talking about the.
There are all kinds of claims.
Talking about our town, that's it, yes.
Yeah, but the, the important thing about the plan that was approved by this town council, the consent order. And approved by the receiver, is that it does, I think, create a roadmap for the development of Center of New England. That is really, without any serious impediment, impediment any longer. And will be supervised by the planning commission, which was the original idea. So, um, if it gets approved, you know, keep our fingers crossed, then I, I think it'll be a good day for the town and a good day for Center of New England.
And, and I think.
Businesses in and.
I, I think eventually it will be, and, and it, it's. If the consent agenda gets approved, and the receiver continues to move forward and, and is able to find new investors up there, which I, I believe he's going to. The Center of New England will actually become the asset to the town of Coventry that it was originally intended to be, instead of the detriment.
So Wednesday, we start to see some kind of movement.
The, the hearing is Wednesday. I don't know if we'll get the decision.
Well, when you have a hearing, there's a lot going on at hearings. I was just wondering. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
In Judge Taff Carter's courtroom, if you're interested.
Thank you very much. Yeah, well.
I'll be looking forward to seeing you there.
Yeah, that's a time constraint for me, but I'd be there. Um. Deb, did you find out anything else about the police tower that you talked about? Last time I was here at a meeting?
The communication tower?
Yes, the communication tower.
At the DHS? No, I haven't heard anything else. No.
I had done a little reading, and I know that there is some grants out there that could possibly be explored, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Um, over to the town manager?
Okay.
We, uh, the PD is looking at, has looked at grants, uh, as part of this, uh. Right now, uh, again, the problem is, this thing has to go up because the building's going up.
I understand that. I was just talking about.
And, uh, the, the biggest issue is.
I understand the building has to go up. I was talking about Western Coventry needing.
That's, that's a whole separate ballgame. That, the tower out there is different from that.
Yeah, I understand that as well.
Have any effect on what's going on out there. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I did ask that question, whether it was gonna improve communications, um, and I was told no.
Yeah, that's a.
Yes, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
Right. So that wasn't in the plan in the first place, is that correct?
Not to, not to that, no.
Yes.
Nope, the tower, the tower at, uh, at the Public Safety DHS complex is for those commu, those systems there and getting out and getting out to the repeater. Which is right over on Reed Schoolhouse, and that's what it's gonna, that's what it's for, but it's not gonna get directly out to, all the way out to Western. That, that whole system needs to be revamped, and having done that before, I know we're looking at probably about a, a need for probably three-quarters of a million dollars or so. Yeah, I'm saying, I'm just.
Yeah.
To get it done correctly. So it's, it's not gonna be an inexpensive project and, uh.
Sure, no, I understand. So I'm a little confused about.
Can I, one, one, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, that's okay.
Um, you're, you're talk, you're talking about the tower out, the, on Piggy Lane?
No.
Over in that area?
No, the tower, talking about the tower that's out over by, uh, all the way down near the, uh, fourteen. That's, uh, what is it? Over near the Griffith property is where that tower that's over there, that handles. Waterman Hill, thank you.
Okay, so that's not, that's not where the signal interference from the two wind turbines are coming from?
Hundred megahertz system, and that's on the state's, state system, not on ours.
Okay, so that's not ours.
No, that is a state, uh, that's the state eight-hundred meg, and it's, it's an issue with that, not with our piece of it.
Well, we're connecting to the, the state's one.
But it's, it's relaying it back down to the other side. It's not going out. That's not what it's, that's not what the, that's not what the issue is. The issue is they can't connect on the microwave.
Done? Are we confident with that?
Please?
A pathway study, has that already been completed? Are we confident on that?
Again, this is, this is a, this is a state police issue. That's, it's their system. And they're the ones that, I mean, we're working with system.
But if we're connecting to that system and there's signal interference, then that's going to direct, that's gonna directly impact us.
It's their towers. That's not, that's not our tower. I mean, it's not our, our connection either. That's the state, that's the state, the eight-hundred megahertz connection.
So are you saying that the state needs to solve the problem so that?
There's multiple, no, there's different problems. I mean, we're talking about two different issues right now here. We're talking about the one at.
Well, when you're talking relays, you're talking about taxpayers that live in the town of Coventry, okay, and they're out further, and they're connecting to a state tower. And then you also have that relay needed by the people of Coventry.
Yeah, but that relay's not, it's not, that's not connecting out into Waterman Hill. The one from, from, uh, Pacillo is not connecting out to Waterman Hill. That's not what that's doing. It's, it's a microwave link that's on that tower. That's no longer because of when the wind turbines in a certain position.
Let me make it a little easier then. Are the people of Western Coventry, who are paying taxes like the rest of us, not in Western Coventry? Still receiving the same amount of security, knowing that they could be helped if they needed to?
I live out there myself, and yes, they are. They are. The, the system is, is it perfect? No, it, but it works, and they have connectivity, and they have, I mean, there are issues that occur on occasion.
Okay, thank you.
Can you explain, I mean, cause you, I'm sorry.
No, that's great, all right, go ahead.
You started to explain, you said when the wind turbines started.
It's not all, it's not, it, it, it doesn't interfere continuously.
So I'm assuming when the wind turbines have faced a certain direction, that's when you're having the signal interference?
Signal interference.
So I'm assuming then a path, path study was never done, when those wind turbines.
Again, I don't know. Again, that's being done by the state, by the state is handling that. Our, uh.
But that went, that went through the town to put the wind turbines up, but that's a whole other issue, I guess.
Exactly. Other issue at this point. So I was a little confused when you were talking about the monies for the old police building and the new police building. Can you clarify what you were saying?
What do you mean? There's money to maintain, that old building has to be maintained once they, they vacate it. It's got, the heat's gotta be kept on.
Right, no, I was just wondering, yeah, the heat has to be kept on until someone else occupies or.
Hopefully buys it.
Or buys it.
Hopefully buys it.
So when, when we, we vacate a, a building, that it becomes a, I wouldn't say the possession, but the responsibility to upkeep, just like the others, a lot of other buildings around here, so. It moves from the cost from one to another. And hopefully we'll, we'll figure out a. Uh, a way to use that building in a much if more efficient manner, or sell it, which would make a lot more sense.
Seven-point-two, I believe it was, for part two, is part of the twelve million, is that correct?
What was that? I'm sorry.
The seven-point-two for part two.
Seven-point-zero-five, and it's six-point-nine for the PD part two.
Is.
Twelve million dollars for the bond for the police DHS building.
I understand. Yeah, I think you said.
Sorry, I keep on drawing numbers, I apologize.
Seven-point-two, I believe is up there, I could be wrong, that you said seven-point-two for part two, and that's part of the twelve million, is that correct? Unless you wanna bring that powerpoint back up.
Point-two is, there's a hundred and fifty thousand on there for the, uh, the dam, uh.
For the Upper Pond Dam part two.
Pond Dam, also. We bonded both at the same time to save origination cost on that, so the actual cost, the actual amount for the PD.
Is six million, nine-hundred thousand, is the pa, part-two portion of it. Uh, I, I do PD part two because I just.
DH is the rest?
It's all together. The part, the human services and the police department are one building, one bond.
I understand.
And the bond that just went out included a subsection of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the judgment bond portion for the Upper Pond Dam for that completion. So rather than going out for two separate bonds, two separate issuances, you wrap them all up into one. There's full disclosures for that.
And it's still within the twelve million.
Correct. We, we did just the twelve million.
Has anything else been, uh, explored about the, about the sewer? At the police station?
As far as what?
Sewer line? Has anything else been discussed about that? Or has that been put off until spring, or till now?
So where we've gone with the sewer line?
You're talking about phase two on connecting the ball field, uh.
Correct.
Right, we have to, we're in process.
I heard we were talking thirty thousand dollars up. For that.
The thirty thousand dollars that was approved, it was fifteen from the town, and fifteen that came out of that, that was approved last. Ooh, you guys approved that, I don't know, six months ago, seven months ago, for that extension line, bringing it back to the ball field area.
They approved that how many months ago? I'm sorry?
Six months ago, I believe it was, five months ago. I was interim town manager, so I'm.
Right.
The exact number of months.
No, you got a lot going on, I understand.
Uh, but that was, that was approved by the council. No, you weren't, you weren't. Uh, but that was approved there. That thirty thousand is covering the cost to bring the sewer connection to the back of the property. Phase two is to actually link the ball field into that sewer, and that'll be done primarily, uh, loc, uh, part of it will be done by, uh, DPW. And, uh, and it would, in the design phase of that right now.
Part will be done by DPW in the design phase of that?
No, 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 no. Part of the work will be done by DPW.
Yes.
But it's in the design phase right now of what needs to be done over there. We, uh, we've got a staggered.
In other words, you went back to the engineer in the design phase, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep, that's, that's part of that phase two piece of it.
Has there been any further discussion for this sewer plan in Coventry as to which, if we do move forward at some point? if we do move forward at some point, if we do at some point? And I'm in total agreement with you. Which section of Coventry would be the next one up to have a sewer?
Again, that's part, that's part of what we'll be working on at that point, but the logical point, the next logical piece would be over by Briar Point, where we've got, we've got the dry line, and we've got a lot of apparently demand for those sewers and getting it connected in. So that's the most logical.
Because of the condition of the waters over there, is that why?
That would also.
No.
That, that, you know, that whole discussion about the test.
Because of the water table and everything that's there, any septic system in that area that has to be repaired or replaced today would call for a sand filter system, which is approximately between twenty-five and thirty-two thousand dollars, depending on the size of the system that you have to put in. And if you even go by the sewer assessments that were used on Hazard Street, you're looking at a twenty thousand dollar sewer assessment. The people that lived there would much rather pay a twenty thousand dollar sewer assessment and hook into a sewer line that was gonna last forever than to pay thirty thousand dollars for a sand filter syst, septic system that has a life expectancy of twenty years that's gonna have to be replaced in twenty to twenty-five years. So as unpopular as sewers are in the town of Coventry, and I understand that, we actually have people that live on the lake that, that are begging for them.
No, I understand that. I do. As, as having volunteered for that position, I do understand that even though I make it really quite simple by saying clean water, and that obviously would be in my toilet, okay, and working with, I was very impressed when I went to Wes Warwick's meeting last month, that they actually have a superintendent that gives a inspection report of different, I wish we had that. That would be really great. I believe you have information that was provided to you about the other side of Lake Ty Oge, okay, that has not had the sewer, sewers installed. And I believe that there was some information that I shared, and that Jamie shared, about the people that live on that side of the lake. And that according to documentation, some of those families, and I believe it's about forty-two percent, can't afford a two dollar and sixty cent lunch. And yet, if that plan goes in there, they wouldn't even be able to afford a twenty thousand dollar assessment. And I just want this information to be put on the, on the minutes of this meeting, understanding that, as I have done before, standing right here, that to displace taxpayers because you want clean water, there has to be, and I believe you mentioned it a little while ago, some other kind of plan to help people like that, rather than force them to move.
Nope, that's, that's one of what we're working on, on that. Again.
I hope so. I was very encouraged to hear you say that earlier.
No, that's something, that's something John has spent a lot of time on, on getting, getting different things together on that. It's something that we will present later when we're, as this goes deeper in, but it is something we're working on. We understand that's, it's not, it's not an easy thing. And again, we wanna, we wanna get sewers where they're needed, and we also wanna get sewers where the least impact on residents that they, they go into.
I've done all kinds of research on sewers. I think they're absolutely fantastic when they can be afforded. I really do. And I do want to just say one thing that I think is really important, that as deep as you think some kind of information can go, the more you provide to the people of the town who are paying the taxes, whether it's deep or not, is better. I'm just saying. Because a lot of what you do is like, woo, you know, and we've talked about that.
I just want to, one little thing, because we're on sewers, and just today, I even showed Ed that I was, I'm actually gonna put up a calculator online so that anybody can go online and put in numbers and actually come up with an assessments.
Well, that was a beautiful thing.
That's what I'm trying to work on right now.
You did last year during the financial meetings that we had, you put, he put in a calculator and said, what if we were at two point six cap? What if we were at a four point cap? You were trying to keep that cap right at four, at four, below four.
I've done that to the last several years.
Okay, you did that, but you did that as well, because I was here and I was very, very impressed by at least showing, yes.
I'm gonna revamp, and I'm actually trying, I always actually had Cody look at all the other websites across Rhode Island for sewer, and look for other towns that have website. And basically, he was, there's no good websites out there for sewer. So I'm looking at doing a full new website.
Oh, there's a few. There's some.
That just, I want the information out there. I wanna calendar the show what the plan is. So.
Right, right.
There's a lot going on.
But I agree totally with you, Gary, and that is, is that, you know, if we just keep our finances and our budget in check for now, though we can, Ann, grow, but we do need to prioritize and understand that there are some poor people in this town that just can't afford, and they shouldn't be forced out, is what I'm saying. So our priorities, okay?
I do believe, I do believe that we need to prioritize, but there are some needs.
For all people.
Yes, there are some needs, both on the municipal and school side, that we need to be objectively considering.
Absolutely.
And all I'm saying is, let's keep an open mind and take each, each item as it comes and make some decisions at that appropriate time, based on the information with, which Mr. Annette and Mr. Wazika have been so readily able to provide to us.
Absolutely, as well as the taxpayers.
Exactly.
Correct. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Vice President, can we get five minutes, please, before we continue?
No, that's all right. I was gonna actually recommend you get up and stand and move front. My watch just said move, so.
Well, I, I'd like to get up and walk, because.
Go ahead.
Mr. Murray, do you mind, we take a short, short little break here for, for a few moments?
It won't take me long. I can guarantee that.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're in recess for a few minutes.
All right. There you go. All right. Mr. Murray, it's your time.
All right. Hope we're all well rested. Luke Murray, 121 Hill Farm Camp Road. Thank you for, I want to thank Mr. Cody for allowing the public to come out and speak. I know this was a big topic last year. I think there's been a huge culture change here. And you can see it. We have a finance director, a town manager in place. It's 100% better than last year already. I think, I think you guys can appreciate that. But I do thank you for the time. Hopefully you don't regret it, but I'd like to see more people here.
We're gonna, we're gonna have more. This is just, this is really the impromptu.
So, just so we're...
Luke, not to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
Not just me that made this decision about doing this tonight. It was the town manager, it was the finance director, the entire council received the package on Friday about what was going to take place tonight, and nobody called the town manager and said, hey, stop that. We can't do that. This is something this council wants to do moving forward. We have to regain the trust of the people back, and how you do that is by giving them access to the council and letting them have an open and honest and quite honestly, a casual discussion with the council members that represent them. And that's what we're gonna look forward to doing. With the new leadership team we have on the council, it's gonna be a lot easier. But this is what we intend on doing moving forward as a council, working together collectively to give the taxpayers what they deserve for representation.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the council letting us speak tonight. Just so people who may be watching, if they have individual comments, because I know this is time-consuming. You're in a budget season. They have individual comments they want to submit. What would be the process for that? So if they want to review the budget, like we heard from Mr. LeBlanc tonight, they want to get clarification on a particular line item, they don't want to come to a council meeting because they're just too busy.
They can, they can email it to myself and I'll disseminate it off to the...
They can, my system, I should know better. They can email it to me. I will disseminate it out to whoever it needs to get to if I can't give the correct answer. That'd be the easiest way. It's centralized and we'll be able to get back to them.
What's your email address?
My email is my first initial and last name, so the common spelling of Wazika.
Why don't you just send it to like District One?
Put it on the website.
District One, if I get them all.
Well, I just...
It was actually a town manager one, townmanager@coventryri.org, and you can do that.
I appreciate that. Well, I think it's important because I am engaged in social media, and that's one thing that comes up. A lot of people are busy, they can't make it to the meetings. It's not that it's just apathetic, but, or they may just have one line item that they want clarification on. I think it's important people to know that they can reach out.
They can reach out to any of their council people as well, to, you know, as well.
Absolutely. Couple things. I was writing some of the notes. One of the things that came up was the fund balance, I think. I just wanted to make clarification on that, that if there's extra money, just saw them correct on this. It goes into what you call fund balance, which is your reserves for future allocation. It's not an expenditure that needs to be approved because construction or purchases, 5,000 for purchases, typically state law, and 10,000 for construction would have to be approved, but that's not an expenditure. That's just a shift in funding that you can use for other line items within the budget. Is that correct?
Well, I, well, I think that if the manager is requesting a purchase on something that is over $10,000...
Yeah, what John was talking about is, he was explaining it's a one main bank account.
Right.
And we don't, that doesn't get tapped beyond what the budget is authorized for. We cannot spend a dime more than what's voted on and approved prior in the FTM and then soon in the all-day referendum. Whatever that max is, that's what we can do. Nothing more. We, we can shift, depending on what it is, we can, a department head can shift money from one budget item to another in theirs with my approval and the town, in the finance directors. If we need to shift money from one department to another department, or shift from, say, contingency fund to a department to make up a shortfall, that's done with the approval of the council. They're the only ones that can approve that kind of transfer. And we work $10,000 or less, it doesn't require in front of the council.
Correct. Okay. So I just want, I just wanted to point a clarification on those. So I'm gonna get to my point, which is, I was clear about this last year and where my position was. And, you know, kind of frame this in the context of the sort of idea of level funding. And while I appreciate it, and believe me, I feel the pain on the taxes too. I moved back to Coventry 10 years ago after growing up most of my life here. Moved away for a short time, came back from Boston where I paid very low taxes because there's a lot of industry. But I made that choice, and I made it because I wanted my kids to move to a good school system. I made it for quality of life. I understood what I was getting into. And along those lines, I just want people to understand that, you know, these are, these are investments that we need to make. So we've, this town has yin yanged over the years. And so now, for all intents and purposes, we have a structural deficit. And so we're constantly chasing things. Year to year, we have the same conversations. Do we go, really, a conversation never is, do we ever cut taxes? It's, do we go to 4% or not? The only reason we're even talking about 4% is because that's the state maximum. I think if it was higher, most of us would be talking about 5% or 6%. And we are not alone. This is happening in towns throughout Rhode Island, including where I work in Warwick. You talk about structural deficits and holes go over there. So I think one of the things that I want to recommend that we look at is, in this new culture, is long-term planning. And I brought this up last year. Now, a lot of people may say, well, we don't have the money for a plan to bring in a consultant. Well, I would argue that we, this is an expenditure we absolutely have to make, no matter where we get the money. Because we constantly lurch year to year, and we know, unlike a regular business, which actually has fluctuations, and serious fluctuations, towns typically operate off contractual obligations, and most, most of that income and expenditure is fairly steady and predictable. So I could probably tell you five years out where we're going to be. What we don't have is a clear path of where we're supposed to go. So my boss used to say, if everything's a priority, nothing is a priority. Right now, what I've seen for the past couple of years, nothing is a priority. We have no idea what direction we're heading. We're just patching holes in a ship. And eventually they're all gonna blow, and we may sink. We talk about economic development. One thing I'll bring up is, we haven't invested in economic development and planning. Thank God we finally have a planning director. But as far as economic development, last year from the council president, I heard during those budget hearings to paraphrase, well, no money for economic development this year. That's no different than every other year. If we want to chart a path forward, we need to invest in that path forward and really look at the end game five, 10 years out. And so what I'm looking for is, in this budget, as I kind of requested a little bit late last year, is to invest some money, whether, you know, we don't have, have to hire a consultant maybe this year, but FY '21. We get somebody from the outside onboard to really outlay a clear path to the future for fiscal stability. And I think that would go a long way. The town manager is too busy. The finance director is too busy lurching audit to budget and budget to audit. It's just not something that internally, I don't think we can handle, and we've clearly shown that. And we see what the lack of planning is, and not to hammer on it, with the sewer program. We really didn't have a clear path forward. We have a multimillion dollar program with no full-time administrator. And most people would say, that's a, if I said I want to start a business with a part-time employee that makes multimillion dollars, you'd say, are you crazy? You need someone to manage the money, pay the bills, coordinate things. But we've never had that. We kind of just add it on to our additional responsibilities. So, long-term fiscal plan is my one major request here. Economic development, I know we're in a tight budget situation. Maybe it doesn't happen this year. But I really do think that planning is a path forward, and there's a lot of incentives that we tend to miss. I guarantee there's grants and things that we currently miss. As you know, I have a new capacity across the street. I know for a fact that we've lost money in the past, past from state housing aid because we failed to invest. We're gonna have to do a technical plan this year, which we could have done last year. So we're not available for housing aid this year. What people don't understand is that investment last year would have leveraged dollars from the state. We get 44% return on investment on housing aid. So every nickel and dime we save, we actually cost ourselves more money. Every time we level fund, we have zero budgeting, and the snowplow goes down. So now, we have to end up buying a new truck because the cylinder blew, because we didn't change the oil and maintain it correctly. So, these things frustrate me immensely, because you can see them coming. And I think they frustrate the public immensely, because we can see it coming. We know this stuff happens, and we see the derelict buildings. I know there was a general obligation bond at one point that was supposed to be for across the street. It got denied. So now we're paying higher energy costs in the long term because we failed to fix the energy efficiency on that building. It just gets poured over in the operating budget. It doesn't go away. So making these hardcore investments that, quite honestly, we need to afford in some ways, is gonna clear, clear the path forward. And some people may not agree with that. That's fine. But that's part of long-term planning. The reason we are in this situation is because we didn't plan a decade ago. What else did I have on here? Just a question on the police station. So we are gonna sell that building? Is that the intent?
There's no decision on that.
Nothing on that yet.
No decision, yeah.
So we know that is an inefficient building, correct? Does it, it has roof issues, all the normal?
Inefi, inefficient? What do you mean by inefficient?
Well, older windows, older mechanics.
Energy-wise, yeah.
Energy-efficient. I, spatially inefficient, you know. I, I get that, so. And the reason I just bring it up is, I just think it's something that I want to, excuse me. It's, it's just something I just want this council to think of, because again, I currently work for the city of Warwick. We have multiple school buildings that are just sitting in derelict repair, and as soon as they go empty, even with DPW repairing...
They die.
They die. And so if we can create a strategy now for the displacement of that building, whether we sell it and we get the taxes, commercial tax rate off of that, that may be a strategy. Whether the town uses it, although I'm not sure they need the space. But I just would like us to really start thinking about that prior to. And I've mentioned to Mr. Wazika in the past, and I'm gonna bring this up across the street in fairly short order, solar initiatives. Office Energy Resources just released brownfield incentives, there's additional incentives, there's renewable energy growth program, or there's virtual net metering. A lot of people get hung up on the fact that, oh, our roofs aren't in great condition, so we might not be able to do it. We gotta do this full assessment. That's not how it works. So I'd encourage the administrators to reach out to Office Energy Resources and Chris Kearns. The way it really works is you put out a proposal, and you kind of select the highest and best. And you have options. You can have a solar field in North Kinkstown that generates and offsets the cost for the town. So, there's two sides of the ledger. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of room for revenue. But I'm hoping, Mr. Wazika, I know you've mentioned you've already looked at that a little bit.
We look, I've looked at that. I've also looked at the landfill, once that's capped. I mean, we're, we're already, we've had negotiations with a couple of different potential vendors on solar going on there, on, on Arnold Road, once that's capped by the end of the year in the fall. And that's what we're looking at there. Potentially, we have a, probably somewhere about $150,000 a year in revenue that that should generate, based on what I'm getting told from the different vendors that we've spoken to. So, that's one we're looking at. Power purchase agreement with them as well, to reduce our costs. We're looking, we're gonna be, in fact, we're gonna be meeting with them, the reps from there next week, in reference to that. So we are looking at solar. We've got some issues with, I'll be honest, on the roof. We're noticing we've got some cracks developing in the building across the street. It was brought to my attention the other day, and we're looking at it now to see. And again, half that building's got solar panels on it. I don't know if you're aware of that.
No, I don't.
Half that building is solar panels. They've been on there since Tom Hoover was here.
They've been on there, they've been on there since 2013, 12 or 13.
12 or 13.
Yeah, 2012 or 13.
Do a, do a, a, an aerial on it, and you'll be able to see it. Half, that whole left-hand side of that building is all, that whole thing is, is solar panels all the way down.
Do you know what we generate off of that and cost?
We're...
He laughs. Well, I mean, it'd be good to know. I mean, this is stuff, again, it's part of a long-term plan.
I can remember, Luke, when, when that project went in, they were right up front about it. They said it was, that project was gonna provide less than 20% of the overall electricity that that building required to run. What the cost savings is on that, I don't know. I don't know. But yeah, 2012. If you go back over the records, you'll find it. And as far as the landfill, I want to go back to that. It's my understanding that there's going to be a 13-acre availability on the top of that landfill.
Thereabouts, correct.
At one, I know that the, right now, we're paying a bond for our portion of the cleanup cover at the landfill that the taxpayers are on the hook for. What I would like to see done with that landfill is to get a couple of, three different companies that are interested in it, and maybe be lucky enough to get a bidding war started on a land lease for that piece of property. Because I'd like to see the land lease generate enough funds to pay that bond back every year, rather than it coming out of the general fund and on, and put, and being put on the back of the taxpayers. I think that'd free up some more money too, for other things.
I think East Providence did something very similar with their landfill.
The only problem that we face over there, Gary, is the capping in the material that's used on the capping. It's gonna limit us on, because of the warranty on that. So there are gonna be some vendors that are gonna be, they're gonna tell us they can do it. And it's, we've got to just be careful when we do that, and it's gonna...
That's because we got started late in the process. We probably should have started that process when the capping procedure started. That way there, we could have awarded that contract or that bid to a solar company that would have come in and worked with D. Gregorio and...
When they started working on, when they started working on this three years ago, five years ago.
We didn't have to worry about the membrane being punctured that they put underneath the sand filter system to cover that. So, so you're right. There are some technical issues that are gonna have to be dealt with, and there's not a lot of companies in this country that are capable of dealing with them, but they are there. And I, and I believe we can still get a land lease on that.
Yeah, well, there are. But we've got, we've got several companies that are interested. The one in particular that I'm looking at, it's actually estimating, they can, they can generate about, about six megawatts on that. Normally, what I was being told is they were looking at four to five acres per megawatt. This company, because of the way they work and the way they're mounted on that particular turf, they're saying they should be able to generate somewhere in the ballpark about six, which in turn is gonna allow to give the higher rate of return on leasing it. That's why. That's why we're looking at what we're looking at over there.
All right. I'm gonna get us out of the weeds, because I think, I, I think the biggest thing I'm concerned about is, are we looking at it? Are we looking at this other side of the ledger? And it sounds like we are. It sounds like you're tracking on that, so that's great, and I do appreciate that. And the last thing I'm just gonna bring up, I was at the legislative joint session, as you know. And one of the things I was a little disappointed on is, what I consider to be one of the single greatest topics in funding is state aid to schools. And I know we talked about maintenance of effort, and that's great. But the truth is, is that, you know, we're, our, New England as a whole tends to rely very heavily on property taxes. Rhode Island especially so. And I didn't hear a lot about that with the legislators, and I'm hoping this council, quite honestly, will lean on them a little bit, on the legislative delegation there, because we're not the only school district suffering a little bit. And I think it's part of, because of some of that, it's past sins, right? And, and again, same thing with the municipal side. We're catching up. And we're trying to, we've made cuts, and cuts were made last year, and you can only cut so far. Especially with education, because you have to have a teacher in the classroom, which is number one expense, salaries. That's any business. We convey knowledge. So, the truth is that there's just not enough coming in from the state on that side. If the state were to fund adequately to the education and take over their burden, the towns would be relieved a little bit on the opposite side and be able to provide some tax relief. We tend to fight the argument on, schools are bad, people make too much money, or, you know, the towns, or police, or whoever's priorities are. But the truth is, is that the state, we pay taxes to the state as well, and they need to shoulder, shoulder a bit of that burden. They do shoulder quite a bit, and we did get a bump this year. And they'll say the bump is great, and, you know, they're doing the right thing. But the truth is, if you start out at a deficit, and you're still at a deficit after, you're, you're still at a loss. So, I'm just hoping we could provide a resolution to our legislators to look at this further, to, you know, the governor's budget, I know she has her priorities. But I have major concerns in that area, and I don't see things getting better next year, the year after that, if the schools don't get better on their funding side, because schools, I've looked at the budget. I went line by line. And, you know, you're in the same situation on both sides. So I don't want to get into that. That's not my role here tonight. But as a resident, I do feel the pain of the taxes, and I want to see some relief. But I don't see it happening without sort of, it's exactly what you said with the solar. We need to plan at the same time we're making these sort of cuts and maneuvers and things, and looking at that five to 10 years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray, thank you for your comments. I just want to mention that I personally reached out to four of our legislators, asking them to look into the forming, the formula for state aid to education, the funding formula. And I did reach out to one who said he is submitting some kind of bill to start a commission to study the formula again. It failed last year. They were doing it again. So I did reach out before the legislative meeting and after the legislative meeting to talk to the four who I thought would have the most influence in our assembly. So I am still pursuing and tracking that. Secondly, I do agree with your comment about long-term planning is needed. When I was elected to the school committee over six years ago, that was my number one concern, and that was one of my campaign pledges, that I was gonna look into long-term planning. The most I was able to do, which I thought was a big step forward, is to get a three-year strategic plan for the schools, and then that was renewed again a couple of years ago. So I am concerned about long-term planning. I'm also concerned about long-term planning for the council and for our town, and I have been anxiously waiting to get the comprehensive plan before us. We keep on being told that it's gonna come, it's gonna come. The consultant that was hired to write the plan is slow, and I don't even know when we're gonna see that plan. The comprehensive plan to me is the vision, which will be needed to provide some of the groundwork for the development of a long-term plan. So I'm hoping that our town manager can put a fire under the planning department to try to get that comprehensive plan to us as soon as possible, so that we can take some action on it, so that we can then start to do some long-term planning that is based on this vision that we have for what we want our town to be. So I appreciate your sentiments, and I completely agree that long-term planning is absolutely needed. It's very late in coming. We're gonna be catching up and running for a long time just to get to the point where we want to be, but it's absolutely critical and necessary.
Okay. All right. Oh. Hello there.
Hi, I'm Carla Tanner, 57 Coventry Drive. My question is in regards to our contract with West Warwick on the sewers. Is that a monthly bill that we pay?
Quarterly.
Quarterly. Have we started to renegotiate that contract with them? If we're paying for only 10%, if we're using only 10% of what we're paying for, we're hemorrhaging there. When are we gonna stop that?
May I?
You may, sir.
I, I have talked, first of all, there is absolutely no incentive for West Warwick to renegotiate that contract with the town of Coventry.
Correct.
Because not only do we own that much of the flow into the West Warwick sewer treatment plant, we're also responsible for the same percentage of repairs and upgrades when the EPA orders those upgrades to be made to the West Warwick sewer treatment plant. So they're getting all that money from Coventry to upgrade essentially what is theirs. There's no incentive for them to renegotiate that contract. I have spoken to at least two, and if I think about it hard enough, it may be three, current town councilmen in the town of West Warwick, and they said, they, they all said the same thing. We can sit down and talk about anything you want to talk about, but we're under no legal obligation renew that contract and to renegotiate that contract, and there's absolutely no incentive to do so.
My understanding, though, at prior town council meetings, is we also have the option of canceling without any penalties. Our past president said that. Now...
No, what, what...
And we, they...
I don't believe that's true.
We can, we can get out. We can walk away. And at that point, West Warwick says, we're not gonna give you any more capacity than what you've got, which means everything on economic development... what you've got," which means everything on economic development down in Center of New England, in any other area that for sewers are installed, we will probably not be able to get any additional capacity to go into the system.
So, we're stuck paying for something that we're only using 10% of?
Nick?
At this point, we're only using 10% of.
That's right.
At this point, but what do we think would be the timeline where we'd be using the 100%?
I hope we never use 100% of it, because that means we're done with an economic development tool that we have available to us in Coventry to bring more commercial in. So, I hope we're never at 100% of what we have for flow.
How long have we been using the 10%?
How long have we been at the 10%? Not very long. We're going to go above the 10% to approximately 12% if hazard comes online and we start using the dry line on Arnold Road, we'll be up to about 12% of the flow.
What is that quarterly bill?
Ballparking about 160, I think it is, off the top of my head.
Jamie, what is it?
This year, I believe the total cost is 667.
Problem is, let's just say next year, they want to do an upgrade and it's $10 million.
We don't have any say.
And then, where's that 2.5 going to come from? The school needs it, and our town needs it.
Jamie, Jamie, can you come to a mic? We've got more than one here. That's okay.
My biggest concern with that contract is that next year or the year after, they could come up and, as you said, the state's going to come in and they're going to say, "You need to do a $10 million upgrade." And our town owns roughly 25%. We're going to have to come up with 2.5. And you already know, we're arguing right now between Muni needing 3-point-something and our town needing, on the Muni side, needing 1.5. So, if the sewer needs 2.5 next year, what are we going to do? That's my biggest concern with that contract, because it wraps us in, not only for the 667, it's millions of dollars for the next 50 years, tens of millions of dollars, forever.
And my last question, is West Warwick keeping their side of the contract?
Processing everything, get sent to them.
I haven't seen them send back a truckload yet.
No, but I mean, as far as billing and how they're actually giving us the correct figures on usage?
I would think so.
Yeah, we give them the figures on usage, on how much we're using, how much we're charging, and then, we charge a piece for them as far as...
And we do have a representative that sits on their sewer board.
Who would that be?
From the town of Coventry. What's the lady's name?
Jennifer Ludwig, right now, is our liaison.
Right, is our liaison. And she attends every meeting down there on a monthly basis, when this sewer committee meets on a monthly basis, right at the West Warwick sewer treatment plant.
So, we're basically stuck with this bill and whatever they tap us for, for improvements that they deem necessary?
No, that, no, not that they deem necessary.
No, that the EPA, that comes down from the EPA, not from...
How long is this contract? When does it come up for renewal? Does it have one, or is it a...
Open-ended.
It's open-ended.
There is a date. I can't remember it, and I don't want to just throw it out there, but it does end. We do have the option to terminate it. The town manager is correct. The consequence is that we have, we give up all the capacity that we have reserved, that we've paid for for many years, other than what we're using. And there are some, there's a little bit of ambiguity about what happens when you terminate, but that's, that's the main thing. But we do have the right to terminate the contract.
Was this cost to West Warwick part of the assessment to the homeowners where the sewer lines have been run by? And you are saying sewer lines never break? I think Sandy Lane would have a little disagreement with you on that one.
No, 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 I'm not saying they never break. I'm saying that, once you pay your sewer assessment, other than your sewer usage fees, you're not responsible for maintenance and upkeep of that line. If it breaks, then the town of Coventry is responsible for fixing that, not the homeowner, not the individual homeowner.
We just have the assessment that would be, but that's not taking into the cost of connection, the cost of permits, of something we're being told we have to do, and then we have to pay for permits to do it. That seems a bit much on, you know, the homeowners. And then, you have to pay to have your existing system decommissioned. So, it's not a simple $20,000 assessment. When you start adding it all up, you're talking somewhere between $35,000 and $40,000. The majority of the homes around here, that's one quarter of their value or more. I think that's a hell of a lot to be asking the homeowners. I, myself, just took a 50% decrease in my income two years ago. I'm hanging on to my house, but if I have to come up with money for something like that, I don't think I can do it. I don't think I can add on the monthly bill. Our previous town council members, when it was brought to his attention, he's going to have a lot of empty homes, his comment was, "So be it." Where's your tax revenue on those houses now? I don't think the sewer system should go any further. I think when that contract comes up for renewal, we need to do some heavy negotiation. I can see that we want to reserve a certain amount of usage, but I think we should only be billed for what we're using, or at least a portion of what we have reserved.
The biggest problem with the contract was that the way it was negotiated many years ago, it set aside a certain percentage of the entire capacity of the West Warwick plant. So, the plant, you know, of the 100% capacity, it had to give out to others, to other towns other than itself. Coventry took a huge chunk of it. I think it was at a time when the aspirations among the policymakers in Coventry were very high, that we would have a large and successful sewer system. And that just proved to be unrealistic, because the cost of building sewers, I just think, was so much more than we would ever be able to fulfill. But it was a mistake that was made a long time ago. I think they probably meant, well, I don't think that they thought, "Let's just take as much capacity as we can." The other thing is, when that capacity was assumed by the town council, by the town of Coventry, sewage plants were not nearly as expensive as they are now, with all the requirements that are mostly imposed by federal law. It's just far more expensive to operate a sewer plant. So, it's true that, you know, West Warwick is our partner. We have to be very careful and keep a very close eye on them. Many of the costs that they're passing along to us are actually required by the federal government and Congress. You know, that's, that's how it played out. It's just so much more expensive, and we have this huge capacity that I don't think anybody in the town really knows how you would fulfill it, except with a lot of development. So, we're trying to look at the development that would cost the least from a construction standpoint and result in the fewest assessments. That, to me, is the priority that the town needs to be examining, and they are. That's what the town council is looking at. Where are the projects that we can do that will not cost a lot? And one of those is Center of New England. That's why that was carefully examined and approved in a consent order, because that actually doesn't cost us. That particular project, by its very nature, has its own infrastructure. It is responsible for the building and the maintenance of its own infrastructure. If we had 10 Center of New Englands in Coventry that were under development right now, the future of the sewer system would be very bright, and you might fill that capacity. But the fact is, that's not what we have. There's only one Center of New England, and it's in receivership. And we're trying to help it come out of receivership to at least give some, some revenue to the sewer systems without costing the town a lot of money or without having to impose large assessments. So, that's just sort of a overall view.
All right.
You've got a really good concern, and you brought up a really good point.
Thank you.
Just answer your question on the assessment. The assessment is only the cost of the construction. It doesn't include any of the rest of it. It's simply based on the construction.
Right. So, our cost is much more than the assessment.
All right. Any other comments by anyone else? All right. Oh, well, Mr. Murray. Luke, wait.
Sorry, I'm just thinking in my mind, just have one question. Luke Murray, 121 Hill Farm Camp Road. Have we looked at a feasibility assessment of diverting the flows over to Warwick? And the reason I ask is because I know they're under capacity, and this is crazy, but you said that we can terminate that contract. The second plant, the Warwick plant, is not that far away. And I know from here to there may be a cost and went up, but have we looked at it at all?
Wouldn't we need to cross, boy, my Rhode Island geography may be shoddy, but wouldn't we have to cross another town to get to Warwick?
You got the malls, Metro Center Boulevard.
I mean, West Warwick and Coventry abut one another. So, we build our infrastructure to get the affluent, if you will, from Coventry to West Warwick, but we bring it to the line.
The contracts with the plant, is it with the line itself? I mean, here's my point. I'm just trying to think outside the box. Is there any way to divert the flows?
I think you'd have to, I guess you'd have a choice. You could go through West Warwick to get to Warwick. But, why would, why would West Warwick give us an easement to cross their town with all of our sewage going to Warwick? Why would they do that? I don't know if they would.
Maybe Foster would.
Well...
Well, I'm just asking the question. It's not, you know what I mean? You got to look outside the box, and we're getting killed. So, if diverting the flow to another location seems abstract, I'm asking to look at it, you know, and get actually an answer on it. I mean, fair answer, but we don't know what the answer is, right? I don't know.
I can't imagine the town of West Warwick allowing us to dig up their infrastructure, dig up their roads to put our lines through, to bypass them, and walk away from our contract with them so we could enter into a contract with the neighboring municipality to use their sewer treatment plant.
I don't see East Greenwich doing that either.
I mean, we got a shot at anything, but...
I don't think East Greenwich would be...
Maybe we can use the cloud.
You know, it's always good to think of opportunities and options, because sometimes an option might, at first glance, not seem reasonable, but it leads you to other ideas that are very reasonable. So, thank you for helping us think out of the box, because it's very important to do so.
Yep, so. All right. Any other comments at all? Great. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Great conversation tonight.